Pursuant to the Public, Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231, Public Laws of 1975, this meeting goes to send to the Adbury Park Press on February 23, 2021, and has been duly advertised in the Adbury Park Press issue of February 25, 2021. Sent to all municipal clerks, attendships, and boroughs within the Freehold Regional High School District. It has been duly notified, and requirements of posting of notices have been met on February 23, 2021. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, the republic which stands on one nation, under one God, indivisible, liberate, and just as long as.
Mrs. Scott, any changes to the executive agenda?
No, Mr. President.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the January 7 and the February 11, 2021 meetings?
Motion second.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Capiello? This, and ladies? Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Capiello?
Yes.
Mrs. Hayley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lavin?
Yes, with seven, staying eleven, February 11.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mr. Moses? Mrs. Finelli?
Yeah.
Mr. Weiss? Mr. Parisi?
Yes.
Mr. Bremer?
Yes. Just so that you folks know, communications are filed in Office of Board Secretary. Our next week, our first report of the evening, we have quite a few tonight, is the superintendent's report. Dr. Sampson?
Thank you, Mr. Bruno. So, very busy time of the year at this point in the year for school districts in New Jersey. Obviously, tonight, we're adopting the tentative budget, but other than that, there's a number of things happening around the district. So, I just want to give a status update on what instruction looks like in the Freehold Regional High School District presently. So, the board remembers that back in early February, we began the process to bring students back five days a week. So, those students that indicated a preference coming to the building five days a week on our partial day schedule were allowed to do so. We also, at the time, maintained our hybrid model and then, obviously, the full remote. So, what that looked like over the past month or so is about 2,400 students that were in for five days a week. There were a number of students that prior to that had been in five days a week, all of our specialized programs, our English language learners, and many of the students that were struggling were brought in five days a week prior to that. So, it wasn't, the five-day-a-week was not new, but it was certainly new in the overall numbers that were implemented beginning in early February. And at that point in time, what we said was we would allow for the five-day option. We would allow students to remain in the hybrid model, which is two or three days a week in person, and obviously, maintain the full remote, and that we would be attentive to what was happening across the state. So, what's happened across the state over the past several weeks is that not our area, but other areas of the state have moved into what's known as the yellow on the Cali Index, which is the COVID activity level index that the state puts down every Thursday. While we were still in the red, many of our sending communities have moved from the red to the orange, which means there's a drop in case rate, there's a lower transmission rate. And so, we said we would be attentive to this and mobilize our next steps as we move forward through the school year. What we are looking at presently is we will send yet another survey out to our community at the end of this month. The third marking period ends the third week in April, and we are going to ask our community who will, who wants to commit to five days a week in-person learning and who wants to stay remote. We are ultimately going to transition away from maintaining the hybrid model in between. It will be five days of in-person instruction, approximating a more regular school day and school experience, and obviously, the remote option will continue. Right now, we're working within three of those models. That's very difficult, but we did that as a short-term measure in order to get more students back into the buildings. What's happened over the past couple of weeks is we've had a lot of success with bringing students back. And a number of our parents, who originally filled out forms that said, "I don't want my child in five days a week," are knocking on the door saying, "I want my child in five days a week." And each of the six high schools is in a bit of a holding pattern right now, and they have a small number of students that are actually on the waiting list to come back into that five-day-a-week environment. Our hope is to move there at the start of marking period four, where we bring more children back to the five-day in-person learning. And that might result in some other changes to our physical structure. We're looking at barriers for those areas that we might be below the six-feet social distancing. I will say that presently, we are up, over 50% of our students are on the full-remote option. We are in what's the version of the spring season right now that has wrestling and volleyball and gymnastics, to name a few, going off. We have already had to shut down a couple of our sports teams. You know, the, some of this, some of the piecemeal sort of guidance makes this even more difficult. I use the example on a call today that you're asking me to still maintain six feet on bus runs to my school, but you're allowing 100 children to wrestle with no face mask on in the building. It doesn't make sense, right? And so, we're asking for further guidance. And the major question that everyone is asking right now that we need to know the answer to is is that full-remote option going to exist in the 2122 school year? I do believe it will, which will have significant implications for our planning and what our staffing looks like. Because I think that one, no one seems to agree on anything in this environment. It's been a very tough environment for the school year. We know that. The one place where folks are in agreement is that the hybrid model is very difficult. It's difficult. And we've been able to deliver that and deliver it well for children, and our faculty and staff have done an excellent job of delivering that. But it is a tough place to stay. And so, what we're asking in school districts is if that full-remote option is going to be available next school year, what are the caveats to it? What does it look like? Because if it's just the same, if it's just simple choice like it is this year, that layers on added planning and other contingency planning that we have to do as a school system. And we have to do it now, frankly. If this is happening now, we're starting to build our master schedules presently for next year. So, once we, once we, once we see what those, what those numbers look like with the, with the next survey that will go out at the end of this month, we will make an informed decision about what is going to happen for marking period four as far as bringing students back five days. Some other issues that folks have asked about, you know, obviously, New York, I believe, just dropped their travel advisory today. New Jersey is still maintaining this. We have utilized our staff using the critical infrastructure clause of the executive order of the governor to have our staff not have to quarantine for travel. They follow other specific protocols before returning. But certainly, our students who travel presently outside of those designated areas that are allowable have to quarantine before they can engage in in-person learning. One of the, one of the things that we questioned from the start of that is how did New Jersey, with far worse numbers than some of these other states that they were prohibiting travel, to impose a quarantine upon return from a state that had better numbers than we did, right? It didn't, it was one of those other items that didn't make sense and continues not to make sense. And so, we'll see what happens with the travel advisory. Any of board members have questions on where we are as it relates to instruction, the day, remote learning, in-person instruction, and where we're headed? Keep going.
Keep moving.
Yeah, keep going. Budget conversation. So, I think it's, I think it's critical to remind our public that the Freehold Regional High School District, under Senate Bill 2, S2, is set to lose $30 million in state aid by the end of that seven-year drawdown, which is four years from hence. What has happened in this year with the COVID pandemic is there is a short-term infusion, in some cases, of federal dollars, in some cases, state dollars. And frankly, there were savings realized as a result of shutting down our operations from March through June, particularly related to transportation and energy costs. Those are short-term infusions that this year will mask some of that $30 million drawdown. The public has to understand, our community needs to continue to be outraged over the fact that we are being reduced by $30 million. The Freehold Regional High School District, as it stands now, is $4.8 million under adequacy, under that line that is used to earmark what should be a, 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 provided financially. We're $4.8 million under that line. Our cost per pupil is $3,500 less per pupil compared to other similar high schools, right? And we have taxed to the full 2% for five to six years at a minimum now, for years. So, we have taxed to the greatest extent possible. We are almost $5 million under adequacy. Our cost per pupil is $3,500 less than the average. And it cost us less to educate children here with all of our after-school activities and transportation and associated costs than it does most of our regional districts per pupil. That's how efficient we are. I was on a call with some folks from across the state, and they referred to the Freehold Regional High School District as the ultimate outlier in the state because of our structure, because of our size, and because of our scope, which has allowed us to realize these efficiencies. In this budget, there's a promise of what's being called stabilization aid. That was referred to as transition aid in the last year's budget before COVID-19 shut everything down. There's a $50 million pot available for the state. I'm not sure what we will or won't be entitled to for that. It's an application process. But I will continue, and I will be messaging our community relentlessly over the next couple of months about the impact of S2 on our ability to operate this district in a way that provides a thorough and efficient education for our children in these communities. I think to continue the S2 drawdown in the middle of a COVID pandemic is the ultimate dereliction of duty from state officials. The fact that we would be cut $6.8 million in this year's budget during the pandemic, I think is the ultimate, I just, it's as if the powers that be don't care about what this district has done right year after year after year. I will continue to advocate to our larger community about making their voices heard about this and reaching out to our elected officials for their help and their support in this. Because it is not going anywhere. And so, when I see everybody patting themselves on their back that New Jersey is the number-one ranked state for public education in the country, right? That's what happened. And there's a lot of truth to that. A lot of it is based on the finances committed to education in this district, in this state. But to cut us $7 million in the midst of that and trumpet us as the number-one public education state in the country, I think is frankly disgusting. So, that's where we're at with, as it relates to, as it relates to S2. And when there are, when a $1.9 trillion package is passed and all this money is being designated to the states, to cut us, I think, is just a warrant, right? I'm working with the Support Our Students Group. That's a group of about 102 districts that are all facing reductions due to S2. We have a legislative day planned for March 24. Myself and several other folks are some of the critical planners in that event. That work is underway. We did write several of us wrote an op-ed that was featured in NJ Spotlight about the problems with the funding formula and some of the issues that we have with it that garnered a lot of press across the state. And so, we will continue to just advocate and advocate like I know these board members have done publicly as well. So, that's where we stand from a, from a budget standpoint. It will be masked this year because it's a good thing, right? Busing's not going to be reduced. We're not going to impose the participation fees, and we're going to skirt it for a year. And then, we're going to come and find next year that, that marching toward that $30 million hole is still going to be there. But it will conveniently be masked during an election year. And we'll be facing that post-election. So, the community needs to mobilize now to get the word out about what's happening with S2 as it relates to the Freehold Regional High School District. As a result of this, we are looking at a potential third bite at the apple of a referendum. A significantly pared-down referendum from the last time we went out publicly. So, for folks who aren't familiar, we went out publicly before last, before, the election year before last. The referendum went down by a 51 to 49% vote. It went down disproportionately in certain areas of our region. As a regional district, one of the most difficult things for us in passing a referendum is that it's simply total votes. And so, many of our communities passed the referendum. Some did not by large, larger amounts enough to tip the scale. We have regrouped because there are still tens of millions of dollars of projects that need to be done in this district in the coming years, particularly roofs, particularly paving, and other infrastructure needs that we will not have the funds for within our operating budget to do effectively. And we are going to go out to the public once again and say, "Like your house, at a certain point in time, you have to put a roof on it. Like your driveway, at a certain point in time, you have to pave it." We have operations with almost 11,000 children in this district. We have huge square footage across our buildings. We engaged in an energy savings improvement plan in 2012 and 2013 that was over $20 million of upgrades to our HVAC at no cost to the taxpayer. We have been good financial stewards. We need assistance with these large-scale projects. We are looking to go out for a third chance at a referendum. More information to come.
Third time's a charm.
Yeah. More information to come. And I know Ted Hopkins is here tonight, our architect, who's here to answer any questions that the board may have. We had, well, obviously, the public doesn't know this, but it will come out in the Finance Committee report that we can dovetail back to Ted at that point in time. But there was some extensive conversation in the Finance Committee about where we might go with the referendum. I also want to thank Melissa Hawley and the Howl Municipal Alliance that put together through a grant that Melissa received a series of parent workshops that are ongoing presently for parents to tune into. Obviously, the pandemic has affected every family in very different ways, right? We know this. I see that my own four children have been impacted very differently. And so, it's just an added support to help our parents in particular through some of these difficult times. And Crystal Riddle, the Alliance coordinator in particular, Mr. Bobbin, please extend our thanks. And then, finally, I want to, just on behalf of Mr. Moses, who was present in the closed session but is not able to participate in the public session, he's not physically here tonight, wanted to offer his congratulations as the Borough Representative, Mike Steely, who's the athletic trainer at Freehold High School. Been there for 31 years. Mike's an awesome person and awesome at his job, universally loved by staff, students, and community, and does a phenomenal job. Mr. Moses wanted to pass along congratulations. And Mr. Bruno, that concludes my report.
Thank you. I call these superintendent updates on Dr. Sampson.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'm sorry. I had some questions for Dr. Sampson. Is it okay if I ask them that?
I'm waiting for it.
I'm sorry. You had talked about actually federal funding. And of course, when you hear all the politicians speak there's billions of dollars coming to education. So, my question is theoretically, let's say the Congress and the President gave New Jersey a billion dollars for education. Does the New Jersey State Department of Education have total control over that money? And they divvy it up as they see fit? Or is someone in Washington, DC deciding how much Freehold Regional, Regional is going to get from Washington, DC?
Yeah, it's a good question, Mr. Messinger. So, the federal government has decided how the federal stimulus money will be allocated. And presently, it's allocated along three and reduced lunch status lines. And so, districts are being allotted money based on those numbers in their district, which is, you know, really our Title I designation. And so, what you're seeing is districts that tend to be, have more high-poverty areas or receiving more federal funds during this, during this time. One of, one of the questions that we've raised to state leaders and others is it's difficult to simply allocate dollars without taking into consideration who has physically opened their doors and who hasn't. So, for instance, the Freehold Regional High School District, to open our doors in October, it costs us a lot of money. We saved millions of dollars while we kept our doors closed. And so, one of the things we've asked is, in any of the rounds of the funding, can that, can that be taken into consideration? Who's been opened for in-person instruction and at what cost? That is, is not something that has been considered as far as I know. The federal government has established how the money is allocated. In other, in other funds, like the digital divide money we got, Mr. Weiss might know this better than me, but the state, the state gave us a lot of freedom on that. They sort of gave us a block grant, right? And we were able to work to, we had to do certain things to close the digital divide. You might see the governor talking about that there's no student now left not connected across the state. Am I missing anything with that, Sean?
So, you know, let's, let's look at the structure of the first version of this that came out in March 2020. Large stimulus package, but it was distributed to states. And even within the states, there were, I think, columns of purpose, right? That were funded to a varying degree. We received money from three of those columns. And, and one was very specific to deal with the immediacy of COVID and what the schools needed to do with that. Another of those columns where we received money was digital divide, was to really make progress on connecting students remotely. And the third was, it was called CRF, but it was essentially from a column of purpose that left it to the governors to decide what was the best use of that for their particular state. So, it was governor discretionary money. We received some, some funding from that. This new, this new version of stimulus package, we've been notified of some of the, what's called, expected funding per district. That hasn't been finalized yet. Applications will become available on March 15, so we'll see what that process looks like. But I would expect that some of the purposes of those columns and the amounts associated with them for Freehold Regional would be fairly accurate. The thing that is important to keep in mind is this is non-recurring money, right? So, it's important to match non-recurring funding with, with non-recurring expenses. They're not recurring expenses because then, one year later, you got a problem. And that's, the longer view of it, and if we look at the organizational financial position, right? It's, it's more than the annual budget, right? This is the time of year that districts do presentations on their annual budget. The annual, annual school budget, while the majority portion of the overall, the district's overall financial position is important, there are two limitations. It doesn't include all components. One you mentioned is referendum and other facility-related funding. And the other is the longer view of more than just the next year's version of our operation, right? Let's look at the trajectory of things. So, the organizational financial position is really going to be the perspective that we come at it on April 29 at the public hearing. And I think we'll have more information on stimulus money and what the best matches for that for our organization, considering it is non-recurring money.
So, the stimulus money, they will tell you where to spend it?
They'll give you, yeah, depends on which column of purpose.
I actually have two more questions. One is still related to this financing from the federal government. And something that I ponder is the president likes to say, "We're going to have hundreds of billions of dollars to reopen schools." And I think about Freehold Regional, right? If they came up to you and said, "Dr. Sampson, we have $100 million for you to reopen schools." What in the world could we spend the money on? Like, building additional cafeterias? Like, I feel like we're going to lose out because our schools are essentially.
I would say, "I'll take $100 million to fix my rooms." But the, you know, the, so the, the short answer on that again, and it goes to, the money is coming in just sort of waves, right? And, and the parameters of which has been established on how it's going to be allocated makes no distinction between expenses incurred, right? And so, there's a disconnect there between what that, what that looks like. And so, the, I think, I think what the president might be referencing when he's saying "We're going to put hundreds of millions of dollars to open schools." You know, we're fortunate in this district, and I mentioned it earlier, we have, we have upgraded our HVAC systems significantly through the ESIT 2012, 2013. There are a number of districts with outdated HVAC systems and other problems that those things truly are millions of dollars to be done in order to open your building. And one of the things that, I don't know if the board remembers, but at the start of this pandemic, when the governor had a few superintendents with him to discuss how they were going to remediate their issues to open their buildings. One of those individuals talked about, "Well, we're going to take time to upgrade our HVAC systems." And all of us in the field said, "You're going to take time to find $20 million?" Because that, that's the type of commitment you would, it, it, it wasn't, there was no, there was no basis in fact to that statement, right? And so, that was a dangerous sort of misunderstanding to the general public. And so, I think that when, when the president is making that statement, he's referencing places that may have some of these infrastructure challenges that we don't necessarily have. However, the truth of the matter is However, the truth of the matter is if your buildings have been closed since last March, you have incurred far fewer expenses than the districts whose buildings have been opened. It's, 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 it's simple fact. So there's no consideration to that. And, and so when the money comes down, and like, like Mr. Voice alluded to, it's, it's, it's a one-shot infusion. You've got to be sure and make sure that you just tie that to something that isn't a recurring cost and so that you can get, you know, the proverbial most bang to the buck for whatever you do in that, in that moment. For us, where we would go at it, there, there's, there's tens of millions of dollars in projects that aren't going to make it into the referendum, that still need to be dipped away at over the next decade. And so I would, I would be looking to, to, to allocate it there so that we're not cannibalizing our operating budget for our kids with what we do have in, 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 in the regular budget.
Thanks. And then I just have one other question, switching topics. With respect to marijuana legalization, there was articles in the newspaper about the police and that if a kid, if a minor got caught smoking marijuana, the police could not notify the parent and it was illegal for the police to do that. So I just wondered, in that wonderful legislation that was passed, if the, if the police had restrictions, were there any restrictions on what this district could do if the child is caught smoking marijuana? It reminded me of that, where thinking back maybe 12 months or so, remember when if the child approached us about concerns about their sexuality and you weren't allowed to tell, the school counselor couldn't tell the parents? And I wondered if it was another instance of the legislation from the state putting restrictions on what our administrative, administrators could tell parents about their home children?
Yeah, so Officer Brand actually discussed this tonight. So it's flat out bad, bad legislation. I'll say that publicly. Folks voted for it. They're now trying to course correct some of the most egregious components of the legislation. I'm a father of four children myself, two teenagers. If one of them is caught smoking marijuana and/or consuming alcohol publicly, I want to know. I would expect to be told. I think it's, I was aghast that they actually passed that with that provision. I think the, you know, there was some real visceral reaction to that bill. And I think that the folks who supported the decriminalization of marijuana, right, of which the majority of voters in New Jersey did, didn't necessarily, we went from decriminalization of marijuana to not telling parents what their children are doing on the street. And then we took it another step and said, oh, by the way, we'll prosecute police officers who enforce it in a, in a particular way. So, you know, this board, you know, one of the things that we passed a couple of years ago was a resolution against the legalization of marijuana as it related to schools. And so the, the good thing here, and Mr. Tiscano can jump in if I'm missing anything, but it, 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 it will not alter our operations materially at all within the schoolhouse because we actually have far fewer rights than, than, you know, than, than, than the police do within, within the confines of, of our, our school. Where it may get tricky would be students in possession and what that looks like in terms of disciplinary action. Now, we, we try to focus on counseling and support and things like that rather than punitive measures, right? But I, you know, within the schoolhouse, it will not have an impact on how we operate. It may, if, there may be an impact to how we interface with our local police departments as a result of it, but not how we operate within the school. Missing anything more?
No, hit the bell ahead. There's nothing in that legalization bill that changes or modifies anything that appears in the statutes as it relates to anti-drug initiatives within public schools. So we are still operating. We are still acting in accordance with those statutes and those regulations. And as, as Dr. Sampson said, the only change could be police involvement and how they respond to that. We are still following the processes that require us, when there's a certain offense, to notify them. They are, they are dealing with the impact of that legislation in terms of how they respond to that report.
So, so our duty.
Our duty has not changed.
The responsibility to hold parents.
Correct, Mr. Bruno. I would also point out that despite the fact that that bill was signed, changing the legalization, that the legalization bill was signed, there has been no change for the New Jersey Attorney General's Office to the memorandum agreement between law enforcement and school districts. And there are very specific provisions in that agreement as it pertains to suspected drug use, suspected drug possession, and steps that have to be taken by the school and in terms of contacting law enforcement.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions?
Shh, I'm sorry.
Just informing parents. You said.
No, no change, no change in schools.
No change in schools, exactly.
Right, I, I, you know what? I thought of something as Mr. Tiscano was talking. What about the school resource officer? Like which rules impact him? The police rule or the school administration?
So, so there's, there's a, a, those individuals, as well as the special law enforcement officers, that the class three officers, they follow, that they enforce our rules and regulations. But if there's a criminality piece, they follow the criminal rules. So it, it would depend on the circumstances. As it would pertain, Mr. Messinger, to possession of marijuana or, or another substance, they would, they would follow the criminal aspect. Okay? It would be up to the administration to discipline under our rules for any possession or use. You know, I'll give you a perfect example. Nicotine is legal. You can't smoke in, in the school. Cigarettes and smoking, you know, is, is a violation of our discipline code. So it would be a similar situation along those lines.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes, sir.
Maybe Dr. Sampson or Mr. Tiscano can just mention this, but there is cleanup legislation, bipartisan legislation that's pending right now to try to rectify this situation with the notification of parents and the police officers. That, just so the community is aware of that, that they, they are trying to clean that up.
Yep, of course, right.
Yep.
Anybody else? Okay. What I was saying before was Dr. Sampson's presentations, there are current things going on in our district, things going on in our state. And Chris, he's bombarded during the meet by all of us, board members, with topics that we get from parents. So he tries to address all that in his report. So that's why they're really, really important. And I know I bother him on topics that I can't always answer and.
I don't know, Mr. Bruno.
Just every other day. So it's so important, these presentations, because they're so important. There is no, we have three reports tonight. And we're going to start with curriculum instruction. Mrs. Higley, Freo Township rep, she's going to do her curriculum and instruction report. We met tonight of Dr. Howe, Dr. Hazel, Mr. Schneider, Mr. Diaz, and Mrs. Merchant, Dr. Ben. And so, Mrs. Higley?
Hi. It's a little bit long. We haven't met for a while. We've been very busy working with everything. So first of all, curriculum writing, program review, it's going to be completed on schedule. The English, one, two, three, and four will be finished next month. And the whole math program will be finished next week. Then we spent time talking about the career pathways. And for the 21, 22 school year, there's 185 anticipated students in the web design program, which is held at Freo High School, Freo Township, and Marlboro. There are 160 students who are interested in being enrolled in the health professional program, which is at Freo High School in Manalapan. One of the keys to these is providing authentic work experiences. They've been able to continue doing this even during this time with guest speakers and having a lot of things web and straightened into the students. Big topic, and that's a question is the NJSLA, the state assessment. The federal government did say that they, that we did have to do an assessment. Each state could not just do away with them. The problem we have is we don't know what it will be in New Jersey. The earliest date is April 5th. But right now, we don't know if it's going to be grades nine, 10, 11, just grade nine. They're still waiting to hear. The seniors are exempt from this graduation requirement, but they must meet all the other requirements that the state and the local education requires. There is possible will be virtual, will be in-person. None of those scenarios have been told to us by the state. So we're still waiting. There's been no training. There's been nothing from the state, just that we have to do some type of testing before the end of the school year, but not before April 12th. The magnet program, they finally, they did release the magnet programs. And the percentage of applicants is consistent, as it has over the years, based on the enrollment of the schools. It actually is an extremely strong applicant pool. March 5th is when students were notified if they were accepted or on the waiting list. March 16th is the deadline to accept or decline enrollment in these programs. Also, we're continuing with the summer academies for original credit and credit recovery. They will be held July 6th to August 11th. The original credit will be virtual. And the credit recovery will be in-person conducted at Pulteck High School. We'll also have additional programs such as AP Bridge, Algebra One Bridge Program. And again, the Algebra One will be in-person where the AP Bridge Program, which is only a week, these are weekly programs, which will be virtual. They're also going to have a special program to help sophomores who will be taking Algebra One, since this is the first year that we switch to all ninth graders who take geometry. So those students who do not have Algebra One in eighth grade are going to be given the opportunity to kind of reboot Algebra in the summer and go over the first couple of weeks of programming in order to help them to system this transition. We're also going to have the Title One Jump Start Program, which is for Freo High School and Freo Township High School students. And that is held at Freo Township. And it will be during the month of July, three days a week. And again, it provides for students who fit the Title One criteria to get extra help in either reading and/or mathematics. We're also going to have the Extended School Year Program held at Pulteck High School. The Summer College Application Boot Camp, which is for all seniors, which is an excellent program. And it's three days in the first week of August. And it really gives seniors coming in a chance to start on their college essay and really give them a head start in the college application process. So encourage people to sign up for that. So was it very enlightening? So thank you to the committee.
Thank you, Mrs. Higley. And Mr. Messinger and Debbie Finelli and Mark Perisi, they are also on that committee that will be met tonight. Looking at the chart that that committee put together of the learning centers and the enrollment, they look real strong. And it's amazing, in a COVID-19 year, we didn't have open houses, they did it virtual. So they look strong. So that's good. Next committee is finance. Mr. Messinger is going to handle that tonight. They met on March 4th. And one thing about our committees, which I think are critical, we need in-person. And we also have the Zoom option for the folks who are still working. So I like the fact that we do both for the folks that cannot be there in person. So nice. So Mr. Messinger, you want to give your report?
Thank you, Mr. Bruno. All right, as you said, we met on March 4th and there were three topics. One was the referendum. Two was referencing the transportation depot. And then the third was the budget. And referendum and budget have been addressed by Dr. Sampson. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to add on to what he said, since he couldn't cover everything. So with respect to the referendum, we heard from the architect, Mr. Hopkins. And Mr. Hopkins and our, some of our administrators walked the roofs to examine the areas that need to be addressed. Some of our roofs are on warranty, some are not. And basically, the architect is redoing the plans to recalculate the areas of the roofs to be able to provide a recommendation to us as to what they believe the cost would be for those roofs that need immediate attention. And I think earlier this week, the architects had done the same thing with respect to paving, along with some of our administrators. So basically, since as Dr. Sampson said, this is our third attempt, the architect is basically going to update the last assessment of our rooms that was done 18 months ago. And we're still losing $10 million as our number for what will be spent between rooms and paving. One of the other aspects of the meeting pertain to the solar element. What we're really doing here is just looking at solar to get prices and see if something could be worked into the referendum. You know, this is a solar referendum. Basically, we just want to take a look at it and see if there's even a potential there of realizing some cost savings. So just doing some due diligence so things don't get overlooked and people don't come back to us after we go forward with the referendum, bringing up the solar component. We want to have all our ducks in a row. So that is not going to come up later. And I believe on, at our April 29th meeting is really where, as a board, we're going to be asked to put the referendum into motion. With respect to transportation, you'll notice that on the agenda tonight, there's the approval of terms of a potential lease agreement with our landlord of our transportation depot. And this is something that the administration obviously has to take a look at because we're only able to enter into five-year leases. So basically, we have a big transportation operation and we have to store these buses somewhere. So this is something that every few years has to be addressed. So the administration has taken a look at that. And as I said tonight, we're going to give the approval for the deal that has been arranged. And then just lastly, the only thing I'll say with respect to the budget development, we did have a long, detailed discussion during our committee just about the insurance and what type of expenditures we potentially could be making on health insurance. Because, you know, there's a self-insurance component. There's legislation in Trenton. I believe at our next meeting for the finance committee, the insurance broker's going to come in. And that basically is the one thing that was talked about in length that Dr. Sampson didn't address. Everything else he addressed. One last thing is with respect to federal money. We are tying some money from the feds into Chromebooks because we want to implement a one-to-one environment for Chromebooks. And this is actually going to free up lab space in the buildings if every student has a Chromebook. And really, it's just all about making sure everyone has the same platform. And that's going to be the standing operating procedure around here going forward.
Thank you.
And that's it.
Anything else? Anybody else? Okay, thank you. That finance committee, Mr. Perisi and Mr. Moses is also on that committee. And I know Mr. Voice and Mrs. Higley, they're working really, really hard to get the budget ready for our board meeting in April, which I think is April 27th, April 29th?
29th.
29th? So I know they're working really hard to get it ready. So next committee up is policy. We met last week, again, Zoom and in-person, which is kind of great. And Mrs. Capitello, she is going to handle policy for us tonight.
Okay, so yes, we, we met both Zoom and in-person on Wednesday, March 3rd. It was lengthy. There were quite a few policies and regulations that needed to be addressed. And you will see that they're on for the first approval meeting on today's agenda. And some of the regulations and policies are actually up for abolishment. Policy 0145, board member resignation and removal. This is a mandatory policy and has been revised to broaden, broaden a board's authority to remove a board member who misses three consecutive meetings without a good cause. In addition, indicates that board members will be provided at least 48 hours' notice in advance of the meeting in which a vote is to be taken to remove that member. Policy 01646, remote public board meeting during a declared emergency. This new mandatory policy establishes standard protocols for conducting remote public board meetings during a governor declaring state of emergency. Considering the circumstances, we've been experiencing this with something that was important to put into place. Policy 1643, family leave. This is a. This is a new mandatory policy. It's an effort to simplify and clarify the rules around employee needs and actions. It represents a consolidation of multiple existing policies. So simultaneously, we're recommending abolishment of a policy, Family Leave, and Family Leave Insurance Program because they were redundant. So we can abolish some of those because it's all inclusive in the Family Leave policy. Policy and Regulation 5330101, Administration of Medical Cannabis. This is now a mandatory policy and has been revised to include that school districts are required to develop and have a policy authorizing parents, guardians, and primary caregivers to assist a student in the medical administration of cannabis. Policy and Regulation 7425, Led Testing of Water in Schools, mandatory policy and a new associated regulation for that policy. It's been revised to include that school districts are required to test drinking water outlets in the designated statewide testing year, which will be now every third school year instead of every six years, beginning with the 2021, '22 school year. So we're moving from every six years to every three years for testing. Policy and Regulation 7430, School Safety. This policy and regulation are recommended for abolishment as the legal requirements are addressed in other board policies and regulations. So again, some redundancy, so we've gone through and realized that those were no longer necessary because they were already taken care of in other policy and regulation. Policy 2415, Students Succeed Act, ESSA. This mandatory policy has been revised to reflect the general provisions of the ESSA which replaced the No Child Left Behind Act. The purpose of ESSA is to ensure all students have equitable access to high-quality educational resources and opportunities and to close the educational achievement gap. Policy 241501, Academic Standards, Academic Assessments and Accountabilities. This policy is also recommended for abolishment as ESSA eliminated the specific accountability requirements under No Child Left Behind. Policy 241502, Title I Fiscal Responsibilities. This mandatory policy has been revised to reflect the general provisions of ESSA which replaces the No Child Left Behind Act. Policy 2415.03, Highly Qualified Teachers. This policy is recommended for abolishment as the New Jersey teacher certification requirements already satisfy that the teacher requirements are met of ESSA. So it's really an unnecessary policy to have in place at this point. Policy 2415.05, Student Surveys, Analysis, and/or Evaluations. This mandatory policy has been revised to address the issue of a school district obtaining the written consent from parents for their child to participate in survey, analysis, or evaluation funded in whole or in part by the U.S. Department of Education. Policy and Regulation 2415.20, Every Student Succeeds Act, Complaints. This mandatory policy and regulation have been revised to update the provisions of the complaint procedure to be in compliance with ESSA. Policy 4125, Employment of Support Staff Members. Mandatory policy has been revised to update No Child Left Behind to ESSA as ESSA maintains the same requirements for hiring credentials for paraprofessionals as No Child Left Behind. So yes, you get the drift that ESSA's replacement. Policy 6360, maybe? I don't know, my eyes aren't too good. Political Contributions. This mandatory policy has been revised and states a political contribution disclosure, or PCD, form is required for the Board of Education contracted educational services in excess of $17,500. Policy 8330, Student Records. This is a mandatory policy, it's been revised and references a provision that addresses student information being provided to military recruiters. An institution of higher education or prospective employers, if the school district prepares a student information directory. Policy 9713, Recruitment by Special Interest Groups. Mandatory policy been revised to reflect that parents of secondary school students shall be informed annually in writing of their rights to request a secondary student's excuse, excusal from participation in all recruitment activities and/or from having their child's directory information provided to a military recruiter, an institution of higher education, or prospective employer. And in addition, the policy recommends notice for a recruiter to request permission to recruit on-school premises at least 45 working days prior to the visit. It was a very busy policy committee meeting.
Mrs. Cappiello, you're leading out the fact that you are a great performer Zoom caller yourself.
Obviously. And I couldn't figure out how to unmute myself. I listened, I just didn't talk.
That was a pretty... Anybody have any questions? I mean, it was a really great meeting. And Adam Royce is on that committee, Kathy Ladd is on that committee with Diane. And we have three people from our community that also serve on that committee. They've been on for a while. So we do have that community involvement with our three community members on that policy committee. They're very important. They're in the field of work, so thank you. That does it for our reports tonight. There are no, no one from the community is here to speak, so we're going to go right to, I'm going to take Jenna. I'm going to take G1.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
If I can have the opportunity.
He can, he can. Go.
And then the agenda. Board members, it's been distributed to you, amendment to several amendments, also a stack out front for those of you in the audience to be incorporated into the minutes, of course. So these are supplements to existing resolutions, all under the heading of G, which is our personnel agenda. And G2, which is approval of retirement. There's the addition of Jamie Wirth, a paraprofessional at Powell High School, effective 6/21. Years of service, 17 years, five months. G4, which is approval of honorary. There's the addition of Andrew Finnegan at Coltsack High School, volunteer assistant coach, boys and girls volleyball. G7, approval of leave of absence. There's one addition for Sarah Reittembacher, English teacher, Coltsack High School, and the leave of absence associated with that staff member. G9, approval of six-period teaching assignments. Two names are listed for short-term, six-period teaching assignments. Carol Krzeski, Krzeski, and Caitlin Mason, both at Freehold Township High School, one in the area of math and one in geometry. And G10, which is approval of substitute home instruction personnel. There is the addition of the name Dominica Dastilva.
Asova. You're good. Only time I got it.
Teacher, paraprofessional, clerical, effective 3/12/21. So those changes will be incorporated into the agenda, so the vote will be agenda evident.
So we're going to take the section of the agenda, personnel and negotiations, G1 through G10. Can I have motion to approve G1 through G10?
Motion.
Can I make a comment?
Mrs. Ladd?
I'm sorry, let's get a person second.
Mrs. Ladd, first.
Second.
Second, Mrs. Higley.
If I had a brief comment?
Yes.
On G1, unfortunately, unfortunately, I have to, yes, to accept the resignation of Warren Seawell, but I just want to say that she was one of the stellar man teachers at Molliver High School, and I think the district will definitely miss her. So I just wanted to refer to those for a job well done in her career here, six years and eight months. Again, she's one of those teachers that contribute to the great reputation of this district.
Thank you. Mrs. Smith, thank you. That's our discussion. Any more discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Cappiello?
Yes.
Mrs. Higley?
Yes, but I abstained on G9 for Cal Kraszewski and G6 for Brian Kova.
Thank you.
Mrs. Ladd?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mrs. Finelli?
Yes.
Mr. Perici?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes. Okay, now we're going to take program operations, building, transportation, the physical plan. That's H1 through I1. Motion?
Move.
Move. Mrs. Cappiello?
Yes.
First, second, please. Do you have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Higley? Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Cappiello?
Yes.
Mrs. Higley?
Yes.
Mrs. Ladd?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mrs. Finelli?
Yes.
Mr. Perici?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes. And the last part of the agenda that we're going to take of Educational Program Administration, I have motion to approve G1 through K4.
Move. Second.
That was Mrs. Cappiello first. Discussion? You have a discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Cappiello?
Yes.
Mrs. Higley?
Yes, but I abstained on G10, Angelique Otier.
Mrs. Ladd?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mrs. Finelli?
Yes.
Mr. Perici?
Yes, and I abstain on J14.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes. Okay, thank you. So we're going to move to all of here to all business. Anybody wishing to discuss all business? Anyone? Okay. New business, Mr. Perici, you going to talk about school boards there for us?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Bruno. I was just going to give us our monthly update on some New Jersey School Board Association activity. As I mentioned at a previous meeting, this past Tuesday, I attended the Mammoth County Superboard Association Budget Presentation by Ron Satzak, who's the Assistant Superintendent in the Powell Page District. Mr. Satzak did a great job in giving an overview of how school districts formulate their budget. It was attended by approximately 20 school board members throughout Mammoth County. This past Saturday, I attended a New Jersey School Board Association Legislative Committee meeting. There were approximately 90 board members throughout the state of New Jersey that attended this online meeting, which also included Senator Ben Goethl. We discussed the regionalization bill. Many in our community may have seen in the news recently that there's a bipartisan bill that has been presented in Trenton that involves regionalization. Considered a very complicated subject matter, but just it's important for me to share with the community that the bill that's currently pending right now, that was discussed at this meeting on Saturday, it is a voluntary bill that allows, that offers financial incentives for districts to engage in studies about regionalizing. So this bill does not mandate or require the school district to regionalize. As you know, we are already a regional school district. This bill would simply be offering financial incentives for districts to explore and study regionalizing. So I just wanted to share that. And also, we've discussed the new school board training. We tentatively have on our schedule for Thursday, March 25th, the New Jersey, our New Jersey School Board Association Field Service Representative is going to be doing a board training with a handful of our board members that are going to attend. Right now, we're a little uncertain as to how many board members will be able to attend, but we do have a training scheduled for two weeks from tonight.
At 7 o'clock?
Yes. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Mr. Perici, just one, one point on that, on that regionalization bill. You know, one of the, one of the questions that a number of us also asked about it was there's, there's a financial incentive for districts losing funding under S2 to engage in those studies in order to drive the timeline for the drawdown of State Aid. And one of the, one of the concerns we had with that was that that is sort of arbitrarily implying that the S2 districts were somehow financially or fiscally inefficient or not doing what they should do. And to put the carrot out, two S2 districts implied that with, and without any sort of anchor on aspirational metrics of what they're even looking at. So that was one of the, that's one of the challenges that we sort of pushed back on that regionalization bill. Because, you know, go back to the comments earlier about our financial efficiency and pre-regionalized district, and it's unfortunate that the carrot was to target, target that. The implication there is you're not efficient, and it's the first thing to do. The district of ours, which you pointed out, is already regionalized, serving eight different communities, approximately 200,000 folks.
Yeah, I agree with you. And I, you know, going back to your comment earlier during your report, you know, you spoke of how we are the ultimate outlier when it comes to these types of circumstances. Certainly, you know, this regionalization bill, you know, is intriguing for, you know, other districts, you know, as it relates to ours, you know, we would have to, you know, look into it much further to see if it's even feasible.
Thank you, gentlemen. Anything else? Anybody else? Thank you. Yes.
Are we in new business?
We have new business. Any new business? I just wanted to just mention again, because Dr. Sampson already did, about the webinars that the Howard Lines and the Freehold Regional of the Grant, very, very important. There are seven of them having to do with stress, raising strong teenagers in this COVID-19 atmosphere. A friend of mine actually watched Monday nights. So there's seven, six more Mondays coming up. So I think it's on our website, and I encourage the parents, get the word around, really, really important stuff that they're covering about teenage stress and living through COVID in school. So thank you, Alani, from the Freehold Regional for that.
Yes, Mr. Bruno, we do have with us board here tonight Ted Hopkins, our architect. And Ted is going to ask you to introduce yourself and maybe provide board with a brief status of the assessment process that is underway in preparation for the referendum.
It's not on, I got...
That Angel is on his way down. Don't hurt yourself with that fleet-putted response there.
I wasn't allowing you to start this morning. Good evening, everybody. My name's Ted Hopkins, Principal of the H.D. Architects, and I've been in the district very, pretty much a lot the last couple of days, last couple of weeks. Bringing it to where we are, as Mr. Messinger said, we did meet last Wednesday and walked the vast majority of your roofs, certainly not all of them, and certainly not the steep ones. But we did have a chance to walk on every roof that you have in your district and at least eye out for one to make sure, as stated, we do our due diligence, giving it a fresh look, if you will, and making sure that, that we're making the proper assessment for what we want to recommend for the roofs that, that aren't questioned. We simply divided into three categories. One category, probably the, obviously the worst would be roofs that are out of warranty and not performing very well. Second category is roofs that are either very close to the end of their warranty or just ending of their warranty but behaving really well, and that's, that's a good thing. And, and the third category is under warranty, not a problem at all. Let's turn our back on that, not even talk about it. So the drawing we're creating is fairly simple. There's, there's three colors, red, blue, and yellow, cautionary, we're going to keep an eye on it, and, and white, which is basically the rest of the building. Matt and Pat and Rasmus were very gracious with their time. He spent a vast... We spent the vast majority of the entire day on all the roofs and, and had a really good time assessing these things. I would like to say this, and I'm going to say this for many things, I've probably said this over the years. Just because it's old doesn't mean it's bad, just because it's new doesn't mean it's good. So we really want to take an independent look and look at it again and do that. So from that assessment, we had some preliminary takeoffs on the areas in question. And we are, we are very close to finalizing that. We should be able to get something to Sean within the next day, though we'll wait until Monday. Yesterday, we spent a good part of the morning, it didn't take us long to do the parking lots at all six groups as well. With me was our civil engineer that we had as our consultant. And again, did the same thing, went to each building, went to each parking area, made an assessment. We sort of kind of knew what we thought it was, but learned to assess it again. We looked at not only the parking areas, but also curbing that's adjacent to that parking area. And I think that we all kind of realized that, you know, it is a visual. It's important, if you haven't been to all six schools, and I'm sure you have at some point, because I know you bounce around with your board meetings, it is important to look at it. It's very much a visual thing. And roofing and paving deteriorate very quickly. It is, they're open to the elements all day, all year, 24/7, 365. They take a pounding, and buses and cars and so forth, turning tires and so forth really kind of help create that damage more quickly. So we did an assessment of that as well. I should have all those numbers back from our engineer and be able to share that with Sean hopefully by next Wednesday. Let me jump on to solar. With the assessment we've done, and I want to make sure that, that what we've done is given those preliminary drawings to Pat this afternoon. So Pat has been trying to make sure that our comments, our assessment is correct. And we are on the same page. And from that, though, those two categories that I had mentioned, which is the worst, which will be replaced, at least that's where our projection will be, that solar can go on those areas as well as the areas that are under warranty. And maybe not the latter years, meaning not very many years left, but the ones that are in really good shape that have a longevity of warranty. And those would be the first areas we would look at to, to place solar on those roofing areas.
Does that mean the white?
That would be the white, but also the red, because the red is going to be done. So then again, it's going to vary with each school, of course. We think we can give a, a very good recommendation. We'll use a very quick shading analysis, because that's what's important to do, and that helps quantify the areas. So we'll be able to give you those as well pretty quickly, and hopefully by, again, middle to end of next meeting, at least. So hopefully, all three, to Sean for disbursement, two board members, obviously the superintendent. By mid to, in late next week, you'll have all those numbers. And we can go from there. Again, it's, it's a, it's our first blush through, we want to make sure that we're giving our recommendations. But areas may be tweaked, and that's okay. Either up or down, whichever way you prefer, but at least you're going to get our recommendation moving forward. And that will be a starting point to, to finalizing everything. So that's where we are. I'm pretty happy with the progress we've made over the last week. And hopefully, over the next week, we'll have all those numbers to you for your, for your review and assessment on that.
Are you finding that it's commonplace now that schools putting, I know it has located, they're parking lots already with solar. But are you finding that it's more commonplace to see the solar on the roofs in these schools?
Great question.
I saw Jefferson.
I would say yes, and then no, and then yes. And then what that had to do with was, was the, obviously, the SRE program was really, really good, and then went really, really bad, and now it's back up again where PPA providers, out-of-purchase agreement providers, actually find it beneficial for them and profitable. So becoming more and more again, as panel sizes go up and as the cost in that is go down, things becoming a lot more popular. We are a big proponent of, of basically ballasted solar systems. And what that means is no penetrations on the roof. There's a, there's a, you know, a sheet underneath the bit to make sure that they're safe, they don't slide, they don't puncture. And maybe one penetration, but that's only for the electric, to down into the electric room. Typically, we take it over the side. No penetrations is, is at all. We have done ground mounts, we have done those other, as you speak. I drove by Stockton today, I was down there, and filled all over the place, and then we just moved hard on. The biggest bang for your buck is going to be, which is the least costly and most efficient, is going to be on the roof. It just, it just is. The structures and everything else that builds with the ground mounts and other canopy systems, they're more expensive. So depending on how you want to look at it, how much, you can, you can delve into all three areas. Give me one second, please. You can, you can mix and match, but the best bang for your buck is going to be the, the solar. And if you're answering any questions, I have Sean.
Well, so, thanks, Ted. And, you know, the discussion in, in finance with what's the sizing of, of the referendum, the focus is on, because we're being very deliberate about what scope we present out to the public. And in the areas of roofing and paving, we feel like the most lean offering is the most prudent way to go. So these are going to be areas that somewhere are in the range of imminent concern to, should have been done by now, right? Okay? So we're, we're trying to really be precise in that aspect. Keep in mind that beyond imminent, of imminent concern, there's more work to be done. And that's something that's part of the larger conversation about, you know, organizational financial position. The solar is almost an independent consideration, under review now. There are some, some subsidies, state subsidies that are, were viable and are more stable now. So we think it's worth, worth a look. As you know, any kind of solar system would not only need to pay for itself in a short period of time, but provide a revenue stream beyond that. So once Ted and your consultant do some of that legwork for us on what areas are, which are capable of accommodating solar, we'll take a look at that, we'll run those numbers, we'll have that discussion with the finance committee to consider whether or not to include that in the referendum as well. So the, the work is underway. We're making good progress, and I look forward to receiving that information.
Is it advantageous to put the solar panels on roofs? That you have three categories here. One was out of warranty, one was close, close to warranty, but behaves well, and the last was no worries. So are you, are you gearing those panels to one of those? Because it, I mean, what is the object now? We have a bad roof now, and then we're going to take the panels off after it's done for one more year or whatever, life of the-
It, it is an expensive venture. You're, you're correct. It is an expensive venture to take them off, put them back on, let's say the roof goes bad. That's why I think we're going to focus on the roofs that are really bad, we're going to replace. So don't be brand new, that's terrific. And the roofs that have a lot of longevity in their warranty left. And if there's anything that we may need to do to even tweak those, I had mentioned to Sean, we had done, recently, and I'm not saying recently, the project is almost complete at Monmouth Regional High School. They're completing theirs, we, we had done their roofs over many years ago, starting around 2011, that might be off by a year or two, but they're really, they're in really good shape. But as a, as a safeguard, we also provide another seam cover, cover seam on the, on the areas in question. So that's kind of also the difference between a 20-year and a 30-year warranty on a roof. So we were able to upgrade those a little bit so that there's no worry that, A, if there is a leak, it's not going to happen in the areas that we just lapped in, that are going to be areas outside of the, the solar array, if you will. But also, on the new roofs that we just did, just completed, they're going to be put there as well. So you're right, we're going to stay away from the areas that are, that are either right at the edge or just over the edge of their warranty, because I agree with you, not a good thing for us to recommend at this time. As other roofs come on board and, and get done over the years, is it possible? Yes, you can always extend your system, relatively simple to do. Also, in the Trep market, simple to do as well to extend that and add that.
How big is this area that you normally do on a roof, depending on the size of them?
It, it really varies on each, on each building. So I did that assessment this afternoon with my, with my associate. We're working those up now, again, we should have those areas, it just varies greatly with each building.
Is there a certain percentage of the size of the building? Is that how you figure it out, or the way?
No, we'll literally take the area of the roof. Well, we actually can go onto Google, and you can see the rooftop units very clearly. And we have shading analysis that we do. We can get pretty darn close, really, it's, it's very helpful. We can do it off in our office. Having walked the roofs, again, I, I can have, you know, I had a basic knowledge. Big things are not to use themselves, but rising walls. A gym rises above everything else. And that, you know, the sun comes around and just wipes that area out. Those are very important, we don't want to put solar there. So we're going to get really close. We'll be a little conservative, but I think we'll be really close in our assessment, and let's see how that number is.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yeah, actually, I had a question, which, um, if this referendum passes in, I guess, in 2021, theoretically, I guess, all this construction would be in 2022. And I've been thinking that we could end up spending a lot more money, because with $1.9 trillion thrown into the economy and potentially more with infrastructure, I mean, there, it turned out that, you know, contractors are booked to the gills, and well, you know, prices are going to go up, because they can pick and choose what they do. There's going to be a cornucopia of riches. And I think it's just going to be interesting to see 12 months from now, what the cost of all this is going to be. Because I got to figure, you know, going solar, environmental friendly is very popular, with trillions of dollars out there, I gotta believe every school district, municipality, state entity is going to go hog wild putting solar. So I think that is a concern of what this is actually going to cost, that the cost could go up so much 12 months from now, you know?
You're, you're correct. I, I think that's a wise thought, and I was actually talking with my head of my roofing department today about that very thing. Not about your projects, but about another project, in its, in its relative cost. Depending on what oil does, that has an impact, of course, everybody I know is aware of that. I have to say one thing, though. Roofing has been a lot more stable than almost any other trade, and again, I have to refer here, so I go back a ways, that I've seen very, very slow in its fluctuation and, and, and slow in its rise. Doesn't mean it doesn't rise. But I've seen HVAC spike 50% in the last two or three, four years. That is, is amazing. The other one then, of course, is paving, again, affected by the, by the oil markets greatly. But again, we'll do the very best we can, understanding your concern. And I think that, you know, my personal ball at Broken College, I had one great, it was awesome. And, and it's tough, and especially in these kind of markets, we've seen it escalate abnormally. And I think we need to be very concerned about that, because we have some contingency.
I'm not going to put you on the spot to say, "What's worse than roof, what's worse than roofs or the parking lots, though?" We'll let that go for another day.
I'll ask that maybe another day.
Yeah.
We better get the park going.
Sir, I, yeah, I was at the meeting, the finance committee meeting, when we talked about the solar. And just one important point that I don't know if it was touched upon, but I think that the board of everybody should know is that, you know, there's three different solar arrays we discussed. You can do the roof mounts, you can do the parking lot canopy, you can do the ground mount. And that the roofs and the parking lot canopies are the more efficient in producing the energy versus the ground mount. And for whatever reason, scientifically, the ground mounts didn't perform as, the, the solar panels on the ground mount didn't perform as, as good as the roofs or the parking lot canopy. Do you recall?
I, I, I don't know if, if, logistically, that makes sense to me without reading anything about it, because it really depends on access to the sun, if there's any of the shade.
Trees.
Anything that might get in his way. That's really what we look for. I, I've heard my, my solar guy, my, my associate, said that, you know, kind of the flatter that they are, the better they are, and that there's no, you know, any, any obstruction getting to it, that's where they can be the most efficient.
Okay.
I was thinking, again, when I mentioned this earlier, and I think you might agree, that if I can put a solar panel up on a roof and not have to build any structure for it, I'm saving money. I mean, it becomes much more efficient. So we do suggest that, and we have clients go, "Boy, I have this big field over there. Can you, can you put something over there?" And the answer is absolutely, and we've done that many times, and they're terrific. But most schools like high school districts, wow, find me a playing field, and that's more important than anything else. I also have a client that says, you know, "We should knock down all those trees and put up solar panels." That doesn't make a lot of sense to me, but let's, let's talk about it. It's a lot of options out there. We find we should be very effective. You know, nobody's really up there a lot, you get diesel issues, we can put some shading and we can take care of that.
Any other questions? Thank you so much.
I'll see you again, hopefully, soon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we adjourn. Now I have a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion.
Mrs. Lavine? Second?
Second.
Mr. Perisi? All in favor?
Aye.